By uh, Councillor Sirino Radoc, seconded by Councillor De Castro. To dispense our number two and three, to expedite our session today. Is there any objection? Even the second attempt for our dispense.
Madam Secretary, please go Dr. Roll Call.
It's three seven, join meeting.
I mute nga 'yung nagkasi- makibigyan ako ng admin powers para mute ko 'yung. Wait lang ah. Bigyan po ako ng admin powers sa technical staff para umute ko po 'yung iba. Yeah, thank you. Uh, Madam Secretary, please go Dr. Roll Call.
The presiding officer, best known as Anthony Miguel Valdez.
Present.
The presiding officer to temporary, Councillor Angelome Jimbakay.
Adyan siya, present.
The majority of the floor leader, Councillor Siri Wilbilo.
Let's hang on that time.
The minority floor leader, Councillor Oscar A.
Here she is.
Present.
Councillors Carolyn D. Season.
Present.
Councillor Michelle S. Segundera.
Present.
Councillor Rosario Do. Contilera. Councillor Berna S. Dirabago.
Present.
Councillor Pobit Iranoi.
Present.
Councillor Dahlia M. León.
She's online but uh, maybe she's having technical difficulty. Go ahead, proceed.
Councillor Alfred Felix City.
Present.
Ex sufficiu members, digan ang mga barangay representatives na O B Bakay.
Present.
And from the so- na pidi direction of Sabunin, President Pablo Di Verdo.
Present.
Thirteen members of this office, ladies and gentlemen.
Thirteen members respond to the call and now certify the presence of four women in our competition business. Please check on Councillor De León if she's having technical difficulty. Thank you. Uh, approval of the agenda before we tackle any unassigned business, Madam Secretary.
We have three unassigned businesses, sir. The first item under proposed resolution number one, one three eight. Approving adoption of the city's local disaster risk reduction management plan of budget amounting to forty-six million, eight hundred twenty-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-seven pesos of the city of Alaminos Pangasinan. The next item is under proposed resolution number one three nine. Authorizing city mayor or crimes to celebrate state to inter it conmemorandum of understanding, by and between the city government of the city of Alaminos Pangasinan at the San, Anda, Tanghalang Salda Angulo Cultural Group Incorporated for the implementation of the project, Pulmahan Angdula, a community local artist development program in the city. And lastly, I will propose ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-two-one. Creating the barangay committee on disability affairs in all barangays within the jurisdiction of the city of Alaminos Pangasinan.
Any other signed business from the body? May mga subutang ihaan? Wala po. Uh, Councillor Alfred.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the agenda for today's session, inclusive of the unassigned business, Mr. Chair.
Just remove by Councillor Alfred De Castro, seconded by Councillor Segundera, Councillor Rabago. Uh, for the adoption, for the approval of the said agenda, any amendments? Hearing on the said agenda is approved. Next item.
Adoption of the journals and minutes of the San Puniya House of Regular Sessions held on October five, twenty-twenty-one and October thirteen, twenty-twenty-one.
Any motion?
Mister Chair.
Yes, Councillor Segundera.
Um, yes, Mister Chair, I move for the adoption of the journal and minutes of the SP regular sessions, held on October five, twenty-twenty-one and October thirteen, twenty-twenty-one.
So removed by Councillor Segundera, duly seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Radoc, Councillor Rabago, Councillor Bernabe. For the adoption of the said minutes. Any objection? Or any amendments? Hearing on the said journal minutes are adopted. Next item. Uh, privilege hour. Any privilege features?
Uh, yes, Mister Chair, I have one.
Yes, Councillor Siri Radoc, Councillor Segundera.
Yeah, I see some concerns about the, uh, sudden increase of the prices of fertilizer at the agricultural outputs.
Okay.
While the price of our palay is going down.
Okay.
I understand that from one thousand one hundred fertilizer now per bag, cost one thousand nine hundred something like that. So, uh, I'm proposing a resolution, uh, like what we did with the gasoline stations requesting, uh, the, uh,
suppliers of fertilizer to consider, uh, reducing the prices of their products. Okay, uh, will we still have a dialogue or no more? Direktan ah.
Uh, I think we have to conduct also in dialogue. I refer the matter to the Committee on Agricultural Products.
Okay, uh, Councillor, uh, Pobit Iranoi.
Uh, yes, uh, Mister Chair.
There is a concern by Councillor Siri Radoc that there is a, there are, uh, there is an increase of prices, uh, regarding fertilizer, uh, not equitable to the price of the palay that is being sold today. So there is suggestion to propose a resolution and kung pwede po tayo makipagdialog para malaman kung situsyo na ito. Similar case po dun sa inosir po ni Councillor Segundera na, uh, 'yung requesting po sa ating mga gasolin station sa kanilang pricing. So may gusto po ba kasi binig, na gusto po natin i-schedule po natin, Councillor Iranoi.
Next week, uh, Mister Chair, Monday.
Okay, uh, Monday, what time po?
One nine thirty, Mister Chairman.
Are you okay with that, Councillor Radoc?
Uh, yes, Mister Chair.
Okay, Councillor Pobit Iranoi moves to schedule a dialogue between the suppliers of fertilizers. Locally lang po dito sa Alaminos? Paano ba?
Opo, 'yung mga tagalay nos pang nagre-risk na concern eh.
Oo, yon, so mga, siguro mga local, dialogue with local suppliers of fertilizers, or parang mga trading, siguro mga trading agriculture products trading dito sa city, na specifically fertilizer ang benta, makipagdialog po tayo sa Monday, nine thirty in the morning, at the SP hall. Please also invite, uh, our DPLO officer and, uh, siguro agriculture office sama na rin natin para at least mas kabisado na 'yung, 'yung trading natin na yon. Isama, hindi natin sama 'yung farmers, noh? Hindi na, hindi na. Okay, okay ka na po doon, Councillor Iranoi? Are you okay with that?
Oh, yes, Mister Chair.
Alright, so ordered. Any other privilege speeches?
Uh, yes, uh, Mister Chair.
Yes, Councillor Pobit Iranoi.
Regarding po doon sa mga applying spot ng LTO.
Yes, flying squad, flying school, flying squad.
Flying squad po, sa galing ng region.
Okay.
At least ang daming complaints na, nanguhuli sila na kahit na nakapark 'yung sasaktan, kahit na walang tao eh, nitikitan pa rin nila, iniwan 'yung ticket dun sa truck.
Okay.
Eh, ang lalaki ng sigil, Mister Chair, kaya sana tulatan natin 'yung, uh, region na 'yung mga mismong nanguhuli para maalaman din natin kung, uh, talagang legal 'yung ginagawa nila, Mister Chair.
Hmm, okay, so, may I suggest na siguro, alongside with the dialogue regarding the fertilizer, siguro invite pa rin natin itong LTO natin sa Alaminos, tapos, baka meron silang alam, kasi I'm sure hindi naman mag-ooperate dito 'yung region kung hindi rin nila alam. Para at least may idea tayo kung ano 'yung mga kinakaso doon sa mga, or nitikitan, 'yung mga, doon sa mga, mga nakaparking sabi niya sagilid, para alam din natin 'yung batas na ginagamit nila na. Tama po ba?
Yes, Mister Chair.
So with that dialogue, pagkatapos po nun, uh, kung, alam nila, baka pwede tulungan na tayong ayusin yon, or in terms of IEC, or susulat pa rin tayo sa region. No, sagawad.
Ah, yes.
So, let us, uh, may I refer this to the proper committee, the committee on, uh,
Transportation.
Councillor, uh, LBD Bakay.
Uh, Mister Chair, uh, siguro ischedule the dialogue, uh, Monday na rin.
Okay.
Pagkatapos 'yung agricultor.
Okay, ten thirty, so, Councillor Bakay schedules a committee hearing, uh, dialogue regarding the said concern on Monday, ten thirty in the morning. So ordered, any other privilege speeches, concerns? Nangyari po sa ating longsod, wala po. Okay, uh, we proceed, Madam Secretary.
I proceed to the reference of this. Under proposed ordinance, for first reading, we have proposed ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-three, creating twenty-two positions under the executive department at the Balagado District City of Alaminos.
Makibasa na lang po 'yung lahat para mabilis.
Proposed ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-four, granting twenty-six subsidy and incentives to child development workers of the city of Alaminos. And lastly, proposed appropriation ordinance number twenty-twenty-one, the city fight, enacting the general fund annual budget for operation of the city government of Alaminos Pangasinan, for the period January first, twenty-twenty-two to December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and providing appropriations there.
Okay, firstly, proceed to the ten position, Councillor Dahlia De León, the chairperson and labor. Uh, shall we schedule a committee hearing? On, ay, naka-mute po kayo madam. Sagawad, naka-mute po kayo.
Ayun na, sir.
Yan.
Yes, Mister Chair, I'm scheduled for a committee hearing one week after that, October.
Pwede sa Friday, gusto mo?
Friday. Ano ba 'yung Friday, October ano yon?
Madam Secretary, can you?
Friday.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Pwede ba kayo sa Friday?
Ah, October, parang may ano yata sa konvinsyon ay, 'yung October twenty-two. May, so sa may halo, kabataan?
Okay, meron tayong sa Friday, meron tayong hearing sa.
Monday, October, twenty-two, twenty-five, October twenty-five?
Oh, pwede, Monday.
Yes, yes, October twenty-five.
Wait lang ah, uh, proceed to, October, uh, the Councillor De León.
Then I am po, uh, right.
On, uh, October thirty-five, ten o'clock in the morning regarding the creation of the ordinance two zero two one dash twenty-three.
Yes.
Uh, October twenty-five, ten o'clock in the morning. So ordered, uh, also since the, I would just take this opportunity as well that the executive department will be creating twenty-two positions. Uh, I think this is part of the devolution plan of our city, so we would like to, in behalf of the legislative department, we would also like to explore, uh, creations, possible creations for the legislative department, in the event that we will be needing, uh, positions to supplement the devolution program of the city. So siguro, Councillor Dahlia, okay lang bang isama ko na rin dito? Isabay ko na? Siguro, I think meron tayong proposal, uh, pinapaayos ko pa sa secretariat na more or less mga four to six positions, uh, from the legislative, for the legislative department. Pero isabay ko lang sa hearing ito sa Monday, pero kailangan ko pong makausap sinio regarding this, kung pwede pa natin na, uh, maisama, doon po sa twenty-two positions ng executive.
Okay lang po. Okay lang po, guys, thank you.
So, is there any objection to that? None? Okay, so the committee hearing is set October twenty-five, ten o'clock in the morning. So ordered, Madam Secretary, uh, please take note. So next item would be, the ordinance on the subsidy incentives for child development workers of the city of Alaminos, Councillor Season. Chairperson on social welfare.
Uh, yes, uh, Mister Chair, sa Monday na rin, mag-ano.
Okay.
For the, ano, to calendar.
Child, Monday, October twenty-five, what time po? Eleven or nine?
Nine, nine o'clock na lang.
Okay, Councillor Season moves to schedule a committee hearing regarding the said ordinance, on October twenty-five, nine o'clock in the morning. Please invite, sino po invite na natin, our CSWD office?
Yes.
Sino pa po? Sa lang naman, ano?
Sa lang.
They have, if, if ever they have a head. Kung meron silang head sa, kung meron silang head doon sa lahat ng child development workers, invite rin po natin yon, 'yung ECCD head. And then 'yung ating local finance, uh, or city budget officers.
City budget, po, yes.
That's all? Okay, so ordered, Madam Secretary, October twenty-five, nine o'clock in the morning. Then we proceed to item number three. Enact the general fund annual budget for the operation of the city government Alaminos, for the year twenty-twenty-two, Councillor Siri Radoc.
Uh, yes, Mister Chair, I would like to schedule committee hearing for the initial review, the proposed budget for twenty-twenty-two on, ano 'yung three business week?
Five, twenty-eight.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Wait lang, tinakuha.
Twenty-seven na lang, twenty-seven.
Wait na, twenty-seven. Twenty...
Twenty-seven.
Seven is Wednesday po. Wednesday, okay. Uh, ma'am, uh, ma'am, mo, is ito ba 'yung annual budget? Parang iba 'yung.
Yes, sir.
Yan na po, 'yung annual budget.
Yan na po, diba?
Title na lang ngayon, iba ang title na lang ngayon. General fund, yun ang gagamiting term. Anyway, uh, Councillor Siri Radoc, the chairman on finance, schedules a committee hearing regarding the said, initial hearing regarding the annual budget twenty-twenty-two on Wednesday, October twenty-seven, ten, ten po? Ten o'clock in the morning. Also ordered, please invite the local finance committee and, uh, isama, isama na po ba natin dito 'yung, ano?
Siguro 'yung, kuwan lang po, 'yung local finance committee para, parang ipa-pan lang sa atin 'yung mga highlights ni budget.
Highlights lang, okay po, okay po.
Okay na siya, baka mabawasan na rin 'yung, uh, impasis natin ng detalyadong pag-review ng budget.
Po, parang last year. Eh, ito bang AIP, isama natin, hindi na muna?
Isama na rin na po, siguro natin.
O, isama na rin, isama na rin natin yun, item number one, under proposed resolutions, 'yung, confirming approving in total the proposed annual investment program calendar year twenty-twenty-two, since these are twin.
Oo, paralel yan eh, parasyan.
Okay, October twenty-seventh, ten o'clock in the morning, so ordered, next items, Madam Secretary kindly proceed.
Please proceed with item number two, under proposed resolution. Under proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash one third, authorizing city mayor art rights to celebrate state to inter it conmemorandum of understanding, by and between the city government of the city of Alaminos Pangasinan, and the Alaminos City Agriculture Cooperative represented by its chairperson, author making BSOR test for the provision of capital assistance, for the palay marketing project of the Alaminos City Agriculture Cooperative. And item number two, under proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash one three six, approving the additional partial fees of specific projects funded out of the twenty percent development fund amounting to one million, eight hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty-four pesos and seventy-nine cents tabos. The special education fund amounting to three million, one hundred eighty-five thousand, thirty-two pesos and sixty-eight cents tabos. And the special purpose appropriation amounting to three million, eight hundred eighty-three thousand, sixty-five pesos and thirty-five cents tabos, of the city of Alaminos for calendar year twenty-twenty-one. Under item number four, we have under proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash one three seven, suspending the fourth quarter business tax penalty, of twenty-five percent and interest of two percent of business establishments at Sukti Market directly affected with a five accident on October five, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, so item number one has been scheduled alongside with the annual budget, so for number two, do we have guests, Madam Secretary?
Yes, sir.
So, any motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, Mister Chair, I move that we suspend our internal rules for the purpose of, uh, accommodating our guest, item number three.
Councillor Siri Radoc moves for the suspension of the rules, seconded by Councillor Segundera. Rules are suspended to accommodate our guests. Madam Secretary, please, uh, acknowledge our guests from item, for item number one first.
For item number two, under proposed resolution.
Item number two.
We have our representative from city operative office and city agriculture office. I'm not sure, sir, ano 'yung pinanat- ano kasi di pa natawag na?
Sorry, again?
Uh, for, for item number two, sir, under proposed resolution, a representative from city agriculture office and city operative office, I'm not sure.
Okay, are they here? Are they here, uh, at the session? Uh, I can't, I don't see them. So we proceed first, uh, to check, please check kung nandyan sila. Uh, we proceed first to item number three and four since, nakikita ko na ang guapong guapong engineer nating, uh, dito, Engineer Ruel Camba.
For item number three, this is department list of specific projects, we have our city engineer, engineer Will.
Okay, uh, magandang hapon po, Engineer Ruel. Yan.
Uh, magandang hapon din po, sir.
Magandang hapon po sa inyo, uh, nandito naman po tayo.
Uh, yes po, sir.
Uh, before, uh.
Ano ko magsalida rin?
Meron po tayong partial list ulit na binigay po, galing po sa executive department. Uh, meron po bang katanungan ang ating mga konsihal? Sinan ang naranap? Balita, ayun. Meron po ba tayong mga katanungan, uh, under development fund, one million, eight hundred fifty-two thousand, seven five four point seven nine. Uh, special educational fund, three million, one eight five zero three two point six eight. Special purpose appropriation is, uh, more or less mga.
One five million.
One point three million, and in grand total, eight point eight seven zero million. Any questions po sa ating mga konsihales, sa mga project na nandito? Uh, siguro po, magtanong na lang po ako since, uh, nandito na rin po kayo, engineer.
Yes po.
Uh, ito pong, uh, sige ata. Yeah, ito pong, sa question po pa sa appropriation, 'yung materials for two giant Christmas tree, sa atin pong, worth five hundred ninety-seven thousand, isa po sa People's Park at isa po sa Lukap War. Iba po po doon sa, di ba meron tayong isa ata? Para additional po ba ito na Christmas tree na pinapagawa natin?
San san po man na, sir?
Uh, the special purpose appropriation po, materials for two giant Christmas tree, worth six hundred thousand.
Yes po, material lang po yan, sir. At saka, material po, material lang po yan, sir, at saka 'yung sa, sa labor po, naka-chance po sa GSO.
Uh, okay.
Labor, ay, materials, materials lang po, ay, sir.
Ah, materials, ang tanga.
Lahat yan, sir, from, uh, two, three, four, five. Materials lang po, ang labor po, labor component is, uh, naka-chance po sa GSO, 'yung mga tao natin sa GSO po.
Uh, okay, out of curiosity lang, engineer, kunyari meron po tayong mga kinabit ng mga ilaw, Christmas tree, ganon. Pagkatapos pong gamitin, ano pong nangyayari? San po tinatago yon?
Sir.
Di ba po nagkakabit po tayo ng mga Christmas tree, ng mga pailaw during Christmas? Pag na pagkatapos pong gamitin, san po nilalagay?
Ah, ina, kinukuha po ng GSO, GSO po, sir, at itinatago.
Ah, tinatago na ng GSO, i-re-reduce na lang, parang ganon.
Yes po.
Uh, okay, any, thank you, engineer, any questions from our councillors? Wala, Councillor Berna Rabago? Naka-mute po. Yan.
Uh, hello, sir. Can you tell me ano po 'yung project natin sa beautification of Lukap War?
Ah, beaut-
Yes po.
Yung worth five, uh, five hundred ninety-nine po.
Yes po.
Yan po, tatignan natin sa, tingnan po natin sa kudigo po.
Di ba pwedeng ibigay na lang natin sa nangangailangan? Kung talaman, wala na panong po tayong mga turis na ano, kumumpunta.
Eight nine nine. Number five po.
Yes po.
Number five.
Uh, iyan po 'yung mga kuwan po, sa electrical po, 'yung mga receptacle, belamil bulb.
Oo.
Po 'yung mga papalitan natin. Marami po ito, maraming quantity po ito, that is around eight hundred, eighty-five pieces. Rubber receptacle po, marami pa pong ano, component niya.
Lukap War lang po ba?
Yes po. Lukap lang po, lukap, lukap War lang ito.
Ano po 'yung may ibang ano po, ibang barangay?
Ay, wala, wala po po.
Wala talaga.
Sa Lukap, laki ko po.
Okay po.
Siguro po, uh, I mean, the, the point of Councillor Berna is valid, na siguro kung meron pa pong mga lugar, maganda po nating i-improve, uh, we can, uh, have a resolution or i-suggest natin para maisama po dito sa partial list, para mga, 'yung mga pangangailangan ng iba. Parang ginawa natin dati, nilista natin para is, ipasok natin sa pagkagastosan. Para at least, kasi kahit pa paano, mabalance out 'yung mga priorities ng ating city. Okay, uh.
Mister Chair, may follow-up lang ako.
Yes, Councillor Siri Radoc.
Yung sabi ni engineer, magpapalit tayo ng mga bulbs, yeah, or receptacles. Sakit po nakalagay na beautification, hindi replacement?
Po, marami, marami pa kasing item yan, sir, ano? Uh, na, parang papalitan o new, additional, ganun po.
Wala, hindi, pwede bang ganyan ka general na beautification pero replacement ang magiging, uh, line item na, ganun po ba?
Yes po.
How about 'yung beautification ng ating, harapan ng children, ng ano, harapan ng legislative department na, napasa na ba sa partial list yon, engineer?
Ay, 'yung kuwan po, 'yung sa pavement po.
Yung sa pavement nung harap, oo, kasi binabaha na kami doon sa harap ng legislative.
Sir, na sa inyo po na po 'yung bola, kasi, uh, we are only preparing the program of works.
Pero may partial list na ba yon? Napasa na mo sa partial?
Wala pa po, wala pa po.
Ah, hindi pa nalagay sa partial?
Oh, hindi pa nalagay.
Pero nagawa na ng PR.
Oo, nandun, nandun pa po 'yung, sir, kaya na po 'yung ano, magkayniyo po.
Okay, sige, i-follow up po na lang kay, sana may include na na natin sa susunod na partial list natin. Para mapondohan na. At least itong sa library, nalagay, nakita ko, nalagay na dito. Okay, uh, any other questions? So did that answer your question, Councillor Radoc? Or are you satisfied?
Something kuwan, kasi beautification, 'yung beautification siya ng term, parang additional, yeah, parang hindi replacement. Atsaka, parang ang point ni Councillor Rabago doon, eh, mayroon, baka mayroon pang mas mga importante baga na pagkakagastosan, siguro, eh, kama ako doon. Ngambawa, 'yung pagbigay ng mga gabot sa mga COVID, ganon. Kesa 'yung beautification mo.
Yan, so, but, uh, noted, uh, we will, uh, siguro, uh, have a dialogue with the mayor regarding those concerns, dahil, uh, since malaki malaking ponderent, 'yung mga one point six million. So, nakapirma naman siya dito, nakapirma rin si Mamueg, si City Engineer, atsaka City Mayor. So baka talaga ito ang gusto niyang maprioritize. So, sabi ko, again, siguro kung meron tayong gusto, like yun, ay, medicine, 'yung mga ayudo sa barangay, or ibang lugar na pwedeng ilighten, is, is, pailawan, isulat na lang natin para, maip, ma, maisama natin sa next, uh, partial list natin, diba? Do, do you want the copy of the list of the beautification, or hindi na po? Yung listahan po nung itong five nine nine, or hindi na po? May program of work ba ito, engineer?
Sir?
May program, para may program of work ba yan?
Meron po, meron po.
Ah, meron. Sige, pengin na lang po kami ng program of work itong item number five, pwede po?
Oh, meron po.
Okay, sige po. Uh, any other? Okay, uh, with that, uh, thank you very much, Engineer Ruel. Wala nang pagsalamat. Akausapin namin, engineer, regarding po 'yung salisating dili.
Sir, sir, meron po koreksyon sa last, sa last po, sa last item.
Sige po.
Uh, dito po sa number eight, sa last item po.
Oh.
Ang, ang dapat ta-titel yan po is labor and material for proposed installation, of street light and solar street light. Street light, light, solar street light. Kasi po dito, uh, ang street light po is ten units.
Okay.
Ang solar street light, light lang po is alawa.
Okay.
Ito, but, installation of street light and solar street light. Koreksyon po sa number eight po.
Okay, pero pareho po 'yung amount, one three four three five.
Yes po.
Please say no, Madam Secretary. So, yun lang po, engineer?
Yes po, yun na po.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Engineer Ruel, uh, our city engineer. Salamat po, okay na po. Salamat po, okay na po.
Sige, thank you, sir, thank you, sir.
Pengin na lang po kami program of work dun na, 'yung item number five po.
Yes po, yes po, sir.
Salamat po. Our next item, Madam Secretary, where are we now? So, we proceed to item number four. Ah, Madam Secretary, ah, is our city treasurer here or? Naka mute kay Mam.
For this item, sir, we have assisted city treasurer to one of people.
Sino po?
This is the treasurer, Amibot po, sir, sir.
Ah, okay, ah, sir, Libot and Mam Shirley Delacruz.
Ah, sir, sir, ah, mam, alam ko sumat.
Ay, Mam Shirley, ginagat po.
Yes, good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon po sa inyong lahat po.
Okay, Mam, eh, na- dito pong, ah, pag suspend ng business tax, penalty, resolution. Mam?
Yes, sir.
Uh, sir. Go ahead po, go ahead po, go ahead.
Okay, so, this is in line po, we'd request po ng executive department for a resolution for suspending po 'yung fourth quarter business tax penalty na twenty-five percent. At saka 'yung interest na two percent to business establishments at suki market, which were directly affected by the fire incident last October five. At siguro, sir, inagay po natin dito if paid until December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one.
Ah, okay, so, idadag po natin na up to December thirty-one po lang 'yung payment, tama po?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Kasi ba jan maring magre-renew na naman sila ng business, ah, permits nila, sir. So, pag extend po natin until December, ah, twenty twenty-two, baka mas po, mahirapan po silang magbayad.
Ito bang business tax monthly po ito? Ito binabayaran?
Ah, once, sir, actually, di ba, may option lang po sila na bayaran in four quarters, pero pwede ng bayaran in na annually. Parang option lang po nila 'yung pagbabayad ng quarter.
So, to be clear, we're just talking about the interest po, no? Tama po? Ah, sorry, the penalty, the penalty po.
Yes, sir.
Penalty po. Yun lang po ang inaano natin, ang penalty lang po ng business tax.
Penalty and interest.
Penalty and interest, tama po ba?
Penalty and interest, sir. Yung twenty-five percent na penalty, automatic po yun, sir, na ikukulit ka sana 'yung twenty-five percent. Yung interest po is 'yung monthly po 'yung computation po nila.
Okay, so they have to pay by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, tama po?
Sorry, yes, sir.
Any questions from the body?
I'm just a mic po.
Counselor Rabago, recognize?
Ah, Mam Shirley?
Yes, ma'am.
If po, kasi ano natin dito, affected by the fire incident, how about those, ano, 'yung di po nasunugan pero nanakawan na magpo, kasama din, din po sila dito?
That's a good question.
Ah, ang pinag-usapan lang po natin dito, pagawad, is 'yung mga hindi pa nakapagbayad ng kanilang business taxes for fourth quarter. Oo nga po, eh, usually.
Sasuki, Sasuki.
Sasuki, oo.
Pagawad.
Hindi, kunyari, 'yung, parang ni Counselor Rabago, kasi, are we talking about all the suki? Kasi merong part ng suki na hindi nasunog. Pero nanakawan, like mo sa wet market, kasama po ba sila dito?
Yung mga fruits.
So, ah, alam ko yun po, lahat po 'yung mga business establishments located po sa suki market.
Ah, okay.
Nang hindi nakabayad ng business tax nila for fourth quarter. Nasunog man o hindi, they're included po dun sa ano, yun po nga lang. Kasi affected din naman po sila.
Okay.
Thank you, Mam Shirley.
So, ah, parang hindi sila nasunugan pero affected sila ng file, okay. So, linaw natin na lahat po ng suki vendor na hindi pa nagbabayad ng business tax. Ang tanong ko naman, Mam Shirley, paano 'yung mga nakapagbayad na?
Ah, anyway, wala naman po silang penalty, sir, 'yung mga nakabayad na, so, hindi na, siguro.
Pero wala tayong pwedeng maibigay na, well, siguro in the future, maybe next year na, mag-isip tayo na pwede nating maitulong rin sa kanila. Para makatulong tayo sa pagbangon po nila, no?
Yes, sir.
Ah. Ah, I'll give you the list, ma'am, kung sino 'yung mga, mga, ano na ito, establishments na ito, suki market na o 'yung C S W D po?
Suki market, sa suki market po.
Sa suki market na. Okay, suki market na, okay. Any other question from the body? So, maganda po ito, kahit pa paano, magbigyan ko sa ano.
Yes, ah, maybe, nice. Ah, ma'am, paano pag one, ah, itong fourth quarter, ah, 'yung manasunugan is, is possible na hindi na sila, ayaw na nilang mag-operate? They already paid only three quarters and they opt to renew in the next quarter. Ano ang magiging repercussions, ma'am?
They still, ano, sir, kailangan pa rin nilang bayaran 'yung fourth quarter nila, kasi, ah, ang basis po natin ng computation for the business tax is 'yung sales nila ng previous year. So, hindi pa po affected 'yung sales nila.
Ah, okay, okay, okay. So, so, the following year, will it still be the effect? For three quarters lang siya?
Opo, sir, yes, sir.
Di ba? So, kunyari, this twenty twenty-one, ang binabayanin mo is your twenty twenty.
Yes, sir.
Now twenty twenty-two, you only operated for three quarters, what's now the effect?
Yun po ang basis natin sa computation ng kanilang sales. Yung three quarters nila, sir.
Yung three quarters lang.
Pag- lang sila nag, nag, ano.
In, in, in case na mag-operate sila ulit by, ah, the next quarter, no?
Yes, sir, yes.
Ah, second quarter, third quarter, what, whatever may, may binagay. Okay, thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Okay po.
Shirley, one technique, one question lang, curious lang po ako. Sorry, 'yung mga establishment sa suki, yun po 'yung, ah, hindi, yun po hindi po penalized, dito ba? Pero 'yung suki itself, ganun ba? O advance na nagbabayad ang suki?
Sir, siguro, include na rin po sila.
Include na rin ang suki.
Include na rin po sila.
Okay, kasi yun nga'y nangyari din na, okay. Sige. Any, last na, ah, thank you very much, ah, Mam Shirley. Our, Mam Shirley and Delacruz, our city treasurer. Salamat po.
Okay, sir, thank you po.
So, we proceed to go back, item number two, regarding the agriculture cooperative, I believe. I believe there is a representative from the city cooperative and the city agriculture office here. Sir Solomon Tablang, I would like to recognize, ah, Sir Solomon Tablang, city cooperative.
Yes, sir, good, ah, good afternoon po sa ating. Yes, good afternoon po and good afternoon to all the members of the august body.
Okay. Sir, pwedeng pa bigyan ng, ng background dito po sa inihi po na 'yung authority regarding, sa capital assistance for palay marketing pro- project?
Ay, yes po. Um, actually, ang L G U po natin ay magbibigay po sana ng, ah, financial assistance para sa ating isang cooperative. Natutulong po sa ating mga farmers, ang Alaminos City Agriculture Cooperative, so amounting to one million pesos. So, ito one million pesos po na ito, ay gagamitin po natin for the, ah, palay marketing po. Kung saan bibilhin po natin 'yung, ah, produk ng ating mga magsasaka. Kasi alam naman po natin ngayon, na, ah, sa dami na magastusin po ng ating mga, mga farmers. Kailan 'yung ating mga traders, kasi is masyadong mababa 'yung mga presyo po nila. So, and dito po ang, ang L G U with, of course, the Alaminos City Agriculture Cooperative. Natutulong po sa ating mga farmers para matulungan din po sila, natumasm po 'yung presyo po niyong kanilang mga produk. So, gagawin po natin dito, ah, ah, ang, ang, 'yung magkikinabang din po dito is 'yung ating mga member po ng ating cooperative. Which is 'yung ating mga farmers din po, na kung saan 'yung instead naibenta po nila, 'yung palay po nila. Doon sa ating mga traders, ibibenta na lang po nila sa ating mga, sa ating kooperatiba. So, si L G U ay magbibigay ng pondo, pambili po ng, 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 ng palay para sa ating mga farmers. At si, ah, si kooperatiba naman po ay ibenta po niya, ah, 'yung options po niya, una, ibibenta po niya sa N F A. Pangalawang option po niya, ibibenta po niya sa Rice City. Kailang problema po po natin, wala pa po tayong warehouse na paglalagyan po ng mga, ah, mabili po natin. Kaya direct muna po tayo sa, sa N F A. So, meron do't tayong nakipag-ordered na rin po tayo sa N F A, na yun po 'yung gagawin po natin. So, yun po, this is one way na matulungan po natin 'yung mga farmers po natin.
Okay, any questions from the body? No questions po? Ah, Sir Sol, ah, so, 'yung one M po, ah, ibibigay po natin sa A C A C, tama po ba?
Yes po, mayor, ah, vice po.
Ah, itong A C A C po ba, is, 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 it's an accredited cooperative, tama po ba?
Yes po, it's an, it's, ah, like, ah, accredited cooperative at saka accredited po din sa department of agriculture din po.
Okay, that's good. Ah, I think last year ginawa na po ah, natin ito o hindi po? First time po ba?
Ginawa po ito ng, ng grupo din po nila, pero hindi po humingi po ng tool, ah, hindi po humingi ng, parang financial assistance na po sa, sa L G U. Ang ginawa po nila, parang humingi po si, ah, parang umutang po sila, ah, as private po do'n sa ating former, ah, city mayor. Para yun po 'yung gamitin po natin para pambili po ng palay po. Pero ngayon dahil, ah, nakita po na effective naman po ito at nakatulong po talaga sa ating mga farmers. Kaya, ah, inadap po ito ng ating mahal na mayor po.
Ah, okay, para at least lumaki 'yung pondo na mapapabili ng palay dito ba?
Opo, opo.
Tapos, last two questions po. Nakalagay po dito sa M O one na, A C A C shall provide equity or counterpart which is equivalent to at least twenty percent of the total project cost in the amount of five million ninety thousand two hundred sixty pesos?
Actually, yun, opo, ah, 'yung si Alaminos, ah, Agriculture Cooperative po kasi, di ba hiningian po nga po siya ng counterpart? Pero pwede niya lang po niya maibigay is 'yung asset po niya. Wish is po 'yung ibinigay po ng, ah, pinatayo po natin na, na multi-purpose building po doon sa barangay San Antonio. Now yun na po 'yung parang, kasi nagsisimula pa lang naman po sila. So, yun 'yung parang asset po ng kooperatiba po natin. Yung, ah, 'yung awarded na, na multi-purpose po, yun parang na po 'yung presyo na po na, nilagay po natin tiyan.
Para yun 'yung magiging buying station, tama po ba?
Yun, yun, yes po, yun na po 'yung magiging sentro po natin po.
Pero okay lang naman yun?
Okay lang, yes, po, opo, opo.
And then my last question, Sir Sol, ah, para po natin, eh, it is a very noble project, ang nap- maganda yun, kasi at least kahit pa paano, mabibili ng tama sa presyo 'yung mga palay na bilibenta po ng ating malilit na magsasaka. How do we control po, kunyari po, meron namang malaking, ah, kumbaga, may magsasakan na malaki ang kanyang sinasaka. How do we control naman po na mapunta po sa mga malilit na magsasaka, hindi do'n sa mga malalaki pong mga, may kayang, ah, magsasaka po 'yung, 'yung grant pong ito?
Actually po, 'yung grant po, hindi naman po ibibigay sa mga individual farmers po natin, ibibigay po siya sa ating kooperatiba. Si kooperatiba po, parang, ang gag- siya po 'yung gagamitin niya pong puhunan para bumili po ng mga palay po natin. So, ah, wala po tayong pipiliin, malaki man niya, umaliit po ng mga farmers po natin. Kasi ang ginagawa naman po namin, bibili na natin 'yung palay natin ngayong araw na ito, idi-deposito na po natin, ibibenta na po natin kaagad sa N F A. Kinabukasan, makukuha na po natin 'yung bayad. So, ganun po 'yung pagikot po ng pera, so meron magagamit na naman po tayo ulit. So, kahit gaano karami 'yung bulto po ng palay na bibilhin po natin, parang kinabukasan is makukuha pa rin po natin 'yung presyo. Kasi, 'yung presyo po natin, ah, basta laglang kung lalampas ng kalahating milyon, pwede po nating makuha po ng, kina, at 'yung kinabukasan po.
Okay. Pero, pagbibili natin 'yung one M sa A C A C, bahala na po sila magbenta, tama po ba?
Yes po, ma'am.
Yung, yung, sa kanila na yun?
Yes po, guys, para na po sa ating mga farmers po.
Ah, okay, alright. Any other questions?
Ah, yes, sir, sir.
Last two questions, Counselor Radoc and then Counselor Delion.
Yeah, Sol, ah, grant yun to, ano, grant, ano?
Yes po, councilor.
So, hindi na sila required na bayaran, grant?
Hindi na po, sir, hindi na po.
Parang ipinahingi natin sa kanila, puhunan?
Opo, sir, opo.
Paano kung nalugi?
Malugi, ah.
Alam ba, kasi hindi naman natin, ganito, ano, alin ba, bumili tayo ng presyo dahil ayaw natin malugi 'yung farmers natin, di na, sa, sa, sa. Hindi natin alam mag alay 'yung presyo. Kinabukasan eh, mababa ang presyo natin.
Hindi naman po, kasi ganun po sa N F A po eh, kaya, ah, actually, ginagawa po natin ngayon, ang presyo po ng N F A is nasa eighteen nineteen. So, presyo, opo, ang presyo naman po natin ngayon is seventeen eighteen po. So, sa, parang seventeen to eighteen pesos. So, para may piso po tayo per kilo na pinapatong po natin doon.
Ah, hindi kaya.
Kasi hindi naman po abrupt ang pagbaba po ng presyo, kasi.
Correct, correct, oh.
Oo, si N F A naman, i-aabisuhan naman po nila tayo.
Ang tanong po, hindi ba natin pwedeng tulungan na lang 'yung mga farmers natin, nadumiri ka na sanik, kasi mas mataas 'yung presyo nila, eighteen nineteen. Bibili natin seventeen.
Opo. Ang problema po kasi po, 'yung operational cost din po, parang hindi rin po kaya 'yung mga farmers natin. Unang una po, kailangan po nila ng transportation, i-transport po nila yun. Pangalawa, kailangan i-bagger po, i-change po nila 'yung, 'yung, pagbabag, opo, 'yung bag po nila ng N F A. Ah, tapos, may limitasyon lang po doon, kapag individual po kasi, nasa, may mga limitation po, hindi ako sigurado na sa, ah, exact na ilang sakas lang 'yung pwede po nilang ibenta. So, 'yung mga ibang mga farmers naman po natin, parang, kung, ang difference lang naman ay fifty cents, mas bubustuhin po na, naibenta ko na lang, 'yung, ito sa COOP na lang. Yun ang nasabihin po nila, kaya yun po, option naman po nila, actually, may mga case po tayong ganun, na 'yung malakihan po talaga. Sinasabi naman po namin na pwede nilang ibenta do'n sa N F A, opo, direkta. Meron din po 'yung, ah, konti lang, kaya sa atin lang 'yung ibinibenta, ganun po 'yung nangyayari po. Pero tumutulong po kami talaga, sa ating mga farmers po, na diretso din po nila. Yung, oo, like for example, 'yung case po ng sama pasi kay Lopez. So, tinulungan po natin siya, na diretta po sa N F A 'yung palay po niya, si kay Jerry Lopez.
At matulungan din natin?
Yes po, sir, natulungan din po natin, denyd po natin sila.
Di ba pwedeng yun na lang ang gawit? Kaysa 'yung magtratayo na.
Hindi po kasi lahat po kaya po eh, di ba alam naman po natin sa, sa mga barangay, wala naman po silang kapasidad, ni-transport po 'yung mga palay nila. At saka magi.
Natulungan, 'yung operational, ah, fifty forty.
Anong gagamit, ano po ang gagamitin po, ah, anong gagamitin po, syempre si, si Akak po, di kailangan din po niya ng, ng gastos din po ng gasolina. Alam naman po natin, magkano na po ang gasolina, po hindi po natin gawin. Kasi ang tubo lang naman po natin is nasa, nasa, nasa fifty cents lang, seventy-five cents lang naman po eh. Hindi naman tayo tumutubo po ng malaki. Dahil gusto lang po talaga nating tumulong. Kasi, kung makikita niyo po ngayon, magkano ba ang presyo ng mga traders? Fifteen, sixteen, di ba? So, mas better na si Akak itinasin 'yung presyo niya para 'yung mga traders po natin, ah, ang tag na dito, susunod po sila.
Hindi, ang, ang kung ano kasi, sayang din 'yung pita ng farmer. Kung naibenta niya sa Akak ng seventeen, naibenta niya sa Eleph ng eighteen, nineteen. Piso malaki na yun eh, per kilo. Ngayon, kung sa halip na ipahingi natin 'yung pera natin sa kooperatiba, eh, paano ko ibili na lang natin ng mga transportation equipment? At yun ang gamit natin pang akot sa mga hindi kayang maghakot na farmers, wala silang kami.
Ang, pero, pero, sir.
Salas sa N F A, parang ganun, parang ganun lang, presyo of course.
Pero alam naman po natin, di ba, sir, na, meron din tayong tulong na nabibigay do'n sa ating mga farmers. Pero alam naman po natin din, 'yung one million is not enough para ibigay mo sa ang dami-daming farmers dito sa Alaminos. Anong, paano mo siya, parang ibig ko sabihin po, sir, itong simple way lang na parang puhunan. Kasi, whatever the, in, the income po ng ating, po, alam naman po niyo, di ba, dahil nag-ano din po kayo sa kooperatiba, na whatever income po dito sa kooperatibang ito, babalik din po sa ating mga farmers. Kasi 'yung matinutulungan po natin ay member din po ng kooperatiba. Yung sinasabi niyo pong piso o salapi, nakita po, babalik din po sa kanila ito, hindi po yun, hindi po 'yung pupunta sa atin, nababalik sa atin, upapanta sa, sa, sa COOP. Hindi babalik din sa ating mga member, through a dividend, di ba? Ganun po naman ang konsepto po natin pagdating po sa kooperatiba. Si big sabihin po nun, kahit na nagsayang po tayo ng, naggastos po tayo ng, ng isang milyon, pero 'yung return naman sa ating mga, sa ating mga farmers is natulungan po natin. Kahit sabihin na nating binting salapi piso po yun, natulungan. Kasi, 'yung income din naman po nito ay pupunta din po in return through 'yung atinatawag po natin, nagdividendo. So, sa tingin ko po, wala pong nasayang po ang L G U pagdating po sa bagay na ito.
Sol, ah, ibig sabihin, ang mga members lang ng kooperatiba na farmer, ah, pwede mag-abil.
Actually, ngayon hindi pa po.
Farmers na, team member, hindi sila pwede?
Ano ngayon po, dahil nasa, na implementation po tayo at saka nasa piloting po tayo, kinikiter po natin lahat. Hopefully, lahat po ng mga ito ay magme-member din po ng kooperatiba. Kasi, ang gusto po natin, lahat ng mga farmers po natin is ma-saturate po natin, maging member po sila niyong Akak na ito. Dahil ito po 'yung talagang grupo ng mga, mga magsasaka. Maging member po sila niyang akak na ito. Dahil ito po 'yung talagang grupo ng mga magsasaka, natutulong din po para sa kanilang sarili din po.
Okay, okay. Thank you ah, sir Sol.
Thank you din.
Councillor Delion, Councillor Delion, quick question. Ang tanong po, Councillor Dalia. Nakamit po, tapos si Capraul.
Yun na po, natanong na po ni Attorney.
Okay, okay.
Oo, 'yung kanina pero ah dapat, kung gusto natin tulungan talaga 'yung ating mga farmers, tama po 'yung sabi ni Attorney Radoc na bakit dadan pa po sa COOP? Kung gusto natin tulungan ang ating mga farmers, diretso na po natin sila sa ah NFA. Kasi kung bibili pa po tayo 'yung COOP, parang paano po 'yung mga palay buying station? So sila din po ay makapiktuhan 'yung ating pong mga ah palay buying. Kasi nandyan po tayo sa COOP na mamilire. So kung gusto po natin tulungan po ang ating mga farmers, diretso na po natin sila sa NFA. Siguro 'yung salapi or piso na diferensya ah kahit siguro mag-arkila sila sir, kasi di ba dati may meeting tayo sa NFA na ah priority na naman po ng mga NFA, 'yung mga nagtagalado ng mga lima, ang bukod ng hanggang sixty yata eh, kini-cater nila yun. Yung iba kasing pumapasok noon, yun 'yung mga traders, inuhuli po nila yun sir, 'yung mga traders talaga. So eh yun naman ang purpose po natin ng mga tulong eh, direct na po natin sila sa NFA.
Okay, so before ah, thank you Councillor Delion, ah bago mag sagot ni sir Sol yun, tapusin ko rin muna si Capraul. Ano po yun sa inyo? Para isang sagot na po ni sir.
Tanungin ko lang kayo sir Sol para kasi nakap- kuwan tayo, naka-like po tayo. Kung saan 'yung location, saan pupunta 'yung mga farmers natin? Ah dadalin 'yung mga ah palay nila pagbenta sa COOP? Saan po 'yung binu po?
Ah, yun pa, oh. Sir Sol?
Okay, yung unay 'yung tanong po ni ni Councillor ah Dalia. Actually tinutulong, oh, opo.
Keep it brief na lang kasi nasagot nasagot na kanina. So short statement na lang po, 'yung kay Councillor Delion.
So, okay po tayo doon. Nandyan pa rin po ang ang City Corp Office at Akak po na tumutulong diretso po sa 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 NFA po. Tumutulong pa rin po tayo. Ang kini-cater po natin 'yung hindi kaya po na mag- na na mag- na magdiretso po sa sa ah NFA. Yun lang po 'yung mga kini-cater din po natin. Saan po 'yung kay Councillor ah kay Councillor Raoul naman po, opo. Kaya ang ginagawa po natin, actually ang opisino talaga po natin is San Antonio pero wala pa nga po tayo na magandang lugar doon kasi lalong-lalo na tagulan po. So ang ginagawa po namin ngayon ay 'yung ating mga presidente po ng bawat ah organization, Farm Association po, sila po 'yung coordinator po natin na kapag mayero ong kung mag- gusto magbenta po ng palay nila, pwede po nilang puntahan po yun. Or meron po ka- dito sa opisino po natin sa City Corp, isang X lang po nila o tawag lang po nila, ay pwede po namin silang puntahan. Yun po 'yung ginagawa po natin. Sumobile po 'yung ginagawa po natin na pag- pagbibili po ng ng palay ngayon. So hopefully kapag nakapag-stable siya po tayo ng warehouse po natin, kahit doon na po siguro 'yung isang lugar na tawag na tayong ah, ah doon na po tayo mag- mag ah, 'yung station po natin talaga. Pero ngayon po ang ginagawa po natin is mobile buying po.
Okay. So, Ma'am Marceli Talania, our City Agriculture Officer is also here. Ma'am, may gusto po ba kayong sabihin bago po natin close 'yung deliberation? Ma'am Marceli?
Ah, good afternoon po.
Nandyan ka pala, hindi talaga kita, sorry. Oo, may gano'n nakita.
Live lang po, Vice. Actually ah, 'yung sinabi nga po ni Sol, 'yung pagtulong po natin sa mga farmers, may may dadagdag lang po ako, 'yung sabi ni Kagawat ah Radoc po kanina. Ah kaya po na 'yung iba nga nakikate kini-cater nung hindi kakayanin. Mostly kasi sa mga farmers po natin, Vice is ah minsan kailangan na nila 'yung bayad. Ah which is pag dinalapa sa NFA nga po, hindi agad mababayaran, kinabukasan pa yun. Kaya nga sabi nga po kanina ni Sol, ah 'yung talagang ah matutulungan, natutulungan natin na dalhin sa NFA tinutulungan. But 'yung iba nga po na nasa barangay, kailangan na nila 'yung pera. So at least mabibigyan na po kaagad-agad sila ng pera. Yun po sir, yun 'yung isang raso.
Immediate, immediate ah, parang immediate ah.
Yes, pangangailangan, that's it. Opo, opo.
Oo. Ma'am Sillet, meron din kayo na mention si ah Councillor Radoc regarding 'yung pagtaas ng fertilizer. So sana makapunta rin, presahirin po na yun para madiscussing ang concern niyo.
Yes po. Biglaan po kasi talagang tumaas ng ah kahapon, one eight na po.
Kaya po, ganun. Narama makapunta po sa.
Ano alam po kami sa DA? Yes, sir.
So with that, ah siguro ang bottom line na nga, so this is a good project. Ah but ah siguro, there is only one project na immediate assistance sa ating small farmers. So siguro kung may mga suggestions 'yung SP members o ang office po ninyo na pwede nating direktang matulungan 'yung ating mga farmers, ah we can also put a budget for that. Kumbaga, may one million tayo para dito sa ACAC. Tapos pagpondo rin tayo ng thousand, hundred thousand or millions also para direktang makinabang 'yung mga farmer. As mentioned by Kagawat Delion and Kagawat Radoc kanina. Ah para 'yung immediate na direkt na sa kanila, wala nang dadaan ang co-operative. I think pagka pare-pareho pong nagtulungan doon, mas magiging malaki 'yung budget. Okay? Any final words po ah, sir Sol? Final, ano meron sumubang dagdag?
Thank you so much na lang po Vice, thank you po.
Thank you, sir Sol. Ma'am Sillet, thank you very much.
Thank you din po.
Okay, thank you.
Shuntalib na po.
Let's go, proceed po. Councillor, meron po tayong ano, Madam Sekretary, under suspension of the rules, wala na.
Wala na, sir.
Wala na. Okay, so we will now lift the suspension of the rules.
Si Ma'am Rose Arrebelo, saan nasan?
Is she here? Parang wala. Regarding, ay, she's here. Regarding ano yun?
Ma'am, memorandum of understanding, some of the articles.
Ah, okay. So again, we will suspend the rules. Ah, ma'am, ah ma'am accommodate our guest, Ma'am Rose Arrebelo from the City Tourism Office. Hi, Ma'am Rose, good afternoon.
Hello, good afternoon po. Can you hear me po?
Yes, ma'am. May parang memorandum of agreement dito with ah Tanghalang Sandang.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Can you give us a background lang po?
Opo, um, sir, ah to the, to you, Mr. Chair, good afternoon po and to the August body. So ito po, we are asking an authority for our mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Tanghalang Sandang Pulo Cultural Group Incorporated, who is also an accredited organization of the Pangunian of the city. And ah, this is due to the implementation of the Hulmaan ng Dulaa Community Based Local Artist Development Program ah na kung saan po, nakakuha po tayo ng grant from the National Commission for Culture and the Arts worth two hundred twenty-five thousand pesos. So we will be implementing this um, this October until November. And um, we are to be in partnership with the PSP or Tatanghalang Sandang Pulo.
So wala namang pong budgetary requirement? Or it's just a grant, no? Right?
Um, sir, from the local government unit of Alaminos, we will be ah counterparting one hundred seven thousand for this project.
Okay. Any questions from the body? So 'yung pondo po mangagalingan po sa tourism na Ma'am Rose?
Um, sir, ang paggagalingan pong budget will be from our Culture and the Arts Fund. Meron po tayong separate na fund na nilagay po nila, Ma'am Wang, for that.
Yeah, maliit na, hundred. Tas lang, maganda yun kasi sayang rin 'yung opportunity for the organization, diba? Para ma- mabuharin ulit sila. Oo. Any questions from the body? Wala na po. Ah, anything you want to add, Ma'am Rose?
Um, ah ito po ay nagsimula na po tayo, no po, meron po tayong Facebook page. Nag- na atin po kong ni-launch last ah Saturday po. Ang title po ng Facebook page is Solubaan ng Dulaa Twenty Twenty One. Pwede po natin ilike ito or at ibisit din po. And let us also ah encourage ah participants for this ah program. Ang atin pong mga target participants are the residents of the Western Pangasinan who are eighteen years old and above na may potential po sa teatro.
Okay, ah thank you very much. Please state to our secretariat na we have the the project ah, we we post about the project and help our tourism officer ah go through with this project and promote sa ating Facebook pages. Okay? Thank you very much, Ma'am Rose. Thank you.
You're welcome po. Maraming salamat din po.
Okay, okay. So we will now lift the suspension of the rules. Ah, ah wait, wait na. Nawala, but may mga nawala. Ah, wait. Okay, check medang to our technical staff kung may mga na disconnect ah, parang disconnect si, ah ay, nandyan dyan pala. So what is the ah, what is the pleasure of the body regarding item number two? Ah, Councillor Robbenoy, ano pong gusto po nating gawin dito sa ating ah proposed resolution? I-include ba natin sa business of the day?
Yes, ah Mr. Chair, if there are no more ah questions, I am looking for the ah
Inclusion, natin.
Inclusion for the business of the day, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved by Councillor Robbenoy, seconded by Councillor Segundera, Councillor Delion, Councillor Fontelera, Councillor But dalawa, dalawa si Councillor Fontelera na liit ako, sorry. Dalawa, Councillor, sino pa? Sino nagsecond kanina? Sorry. Councillor Rabago, ah to include the said item in the business of the day.
Second.
For deliberation. Sorry na distracted. Dalawa kasi si Councillor Joselito Fontelera kaya parang, sorry ko. So anyway, ah we proceed, item number three, what is the pleasure of the body? Councillor Radoc, three and four?
Three and four. I move, Mr. Chair, that we include them in the business of the day.
It's been moved by Councillor Cilidado, seconded by Councillor Segundera to include item number three and four in the business of the day for deliberation. Any objection? It is not the said two items are included in the business of the day. Madam Sekretary, proceed. Unassigned business.
Under unassigned business, we have the proposed resolution of the city mayor's advice suggested in a memorandum of understanding by the City Government of the Central Region of Pangasinan and the Tanghalang Sandang Incorporated for the implementation of the project for Mahanatuna, a community local artist development program.
Ah, okay. Si- si- wala dyan ba si Councillor Bakay? Wala. Ah, Councillor De Castro, Chairman of Laws and Rules, since it's summer MOU. Shall we include in the business of the day?
Yes, ah, Mr. Chair. I move that the said matter be included in the business of the day.
Councillor De Castro, seconded, by Councillor Delion, Councillor Segundera, Councillor Sezon, Councillor Radoc, Councillor Rabago, Councillor Arrebelo. For the inclusion of the said item in the business of the day for deliberation. Any objection? It is not the said item is included in the business of the day. Next item, Madam Sekretary.
Ah, proposed resolution number under, proposed resolution number one thirty-eight approving of the rapid rate for local disaster risk reduction and management one amounting to forty-six million and one hundred thirty-nine thousand six hundred fifty-seven pesos of the city.
Councillor Segundera, seconded.
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, I move for the um approval of the said resolution.
Um. Ah.
Or should we?
Would you, I think this is a plan with ah for twenty twenty-two. So would you like to schedule for hearing to to check on the items? Or you have already checked these already?
Yes, Mr. Chair, ah, yes, Mr. Chair, um, I thought um that will be for the next ah session. So.
Okay.
And, oh, anyway, I can schedule it for um a committee hearing na lang po.
Ano ba ito, Ma'am, sorry, Councillor. Ma'am, ano ba ito, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two?
Project, the plan po, plan.
Parang AIP nila?
For the plan.
Yes, po.
Ah, okay, okay. I think I haven't gone through this as well. So is it okay, Councillor Michelle, na you can schedule it for hearing na lang muna or i?
Okay, um, I can just schedule it for hearing na lang po muna, um, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Sige, when do you want to schedule the hearing, Councillor Michelle?
Um, next week na lang po, um, October twenty-nine?
October twenty-nine, what time po?
At ten o'clock in the morning.
Ten o'clock in the morning. So, Councillor Michelle, the the chairperson on CDRRM schedules a hearing regarding the said CDRRM plan ah on October twenty-nine, ten o'clock in the morning. Okay, so ordered? I would like to request the committee members also to review also the plan since ito 'yung parang AIP nung CDR for twenty twenty-two. So medyo malaki po 'yung pondo yun. Para alam natin kung ano 'yung magpagagastusan nung forty-five million next year. So I'm sure Councillor Michelle will be ah ah over, I mean handling this properly naman. So pabigyan na lang po ng copy si Councillor Michelle, ah Ma'am Rose, kung wala pa siyang copy nung ano. Ako, wala pa rin akong copy. Pabigyan din ako ng copy.
Ah, Mr. Chair, pati kami na rin siguro, pwedeng pabigyan ko copy na rin.
Yung full copy, eto meron, meron naman ata doon sa soft copy. I think ah, 'yung may hard copy na lang po, pabigyan na lang po si Councillor Michelle and si Councillor Ban. Ah, 'yung akin kasi soft copy pa lang eh. Ako rin hard copy rin ako. Sige po. Okay na po, Councillor Michelle?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you po, Councillor. So we proceed to the next item.
Item number three, under unassigned, is the proposed ordinance number twenty-five to seventy-one. Creating the barangay committee of disability affairs in or barangays.
Madam, magplus laba tayong ano, committee report?
Sir?
Wala tayong committee report?
Chief, may ano sir?
Lumumpas ka na ata.
So unassigned po po?
Ah, unassigned, go ahead, sige.
Ordinance creating the barangay committee of disability affairs or barangays within the district of the city of Pangasinan.
So will Councillor Sezon handle this or LBP Bakay? Councillor Sezon, ikaw ba to?
I think, pwedeng joint na lang.
Yeah, sige, joint na lang kayo ni ano.
Yes, the Councillor Capraul. Yes, um, kung pwedeng kaya ng hearing, committee hearing sa next week, um, siguro sa twenty-fifth na rin po, October twenty-five.
Twenty-five, October twenty-five.
Eleven, yeah.
Councillor Sezon, the chairperson on social welfare, would like to schedule a committee hearing regarding the said ordinance ba? Ordinance?
Of ordinance.
On October twenty-five, eleven o'clock in the morning. So ordered? Yes, Madam Sekretary, next item?
I proceed to committee reports. The first item is the joint committee report on the year of October seventh, regarding review of optimist progressation of Paragon in charity facilities in Alaminos City Chapter.
As sino po 'yung chairperson nito, nagpreside? Councillor Arrebelo, you are recognized? Ah, in the recommendation, na lang, siguro?
In view of the above stated findings, the committee hereby move for the its committee report and the proposed measure be limited on the business of the day for deliberation, Mr. Chair.
Okay. At ito, Madam Sekretary, please flash the committee report sa screen para po sa mga ating ah viewers and sa mga Councillors gusto po kong ah magreevaluate 'yung committee report. Okay, it has been moved by Councillor Arrebelo ah that the committee report is adopted and the said matter is ah included in the business of the day for deliberation. Any objection? It is not the shared committee report is hereby adopted. The said ah matter is included in the business of the day. Next item, Madam Sekretary.
Joint committee report from the Dia of the Father of October eleventh regarding the joint committee from the Dia of the Father of the City of Usm, the motor capacity stations regarding the issue of the go ah trips kami po ng mga.
Councillor Raoul Bakay, seconded.
Ah, Mr. Chair, ah, in the view of the above stated finding, the committee hereby moves for the adoption of the its committee report and subject to dialogue, be deleted from the calendar of business.
Before we act on the motion, ano nang nangyari ba? Parang ano na, nakapag-usap na? Okay na?
Oo, opo, Mr. Chair.
Ah, naayos na, naayos. Na-settle na 'yung nag- 'yung problema.
Opo.
Okay, so it has been moved by ah Councillor Raoul Bakay. Okay, so it has been moved by uh, Counselor Raoul Bakay that the adoption of this committee report and the said matter be deleted in our calendar of this business. Any objection? He ringan the said committee report is hereby adopted and the said measure is uh, deleted in our calendar of business. So ordered? Next item, Madam Sekretary?
Joint committee report from the hearing of November eleventh regarding emission system center guideline.
Yes, Counselor Bakay?
Uh, in view of the above state finding, the committee hereby moves for the adoption of its committee report and the measure be deleted from the calendar of the business.
Okay, ah, anong naging ending cap?
Oo, uh, okay na, basta bumalik 'yung dati.
Ah, dati na. So, hindi na parang mahirapan 'yung ating mga uh, mga transport groups.
Oo.
Pero bukas pa rin 'yung.
Hindi na, hindi na, ah, kwan din na, may uh, nagbigay ng kwan din ng su- uh, memorandum circular sa national na ito muna 'yung uh, kalakaran na ganun.
Uh, 'yung one-stop shop, wag munang ngano.
Oo, oo.
Uh, okay, that's good para at least, kasi magre-renew na naman 'yung mga ating mga tricycle operator. So, Counselors, Counselor Raoul Bakay moves for the adoption of this committee report. The said matter be uh, deleted in our calendar of business. Any objections? He ringan the said committee report is hereby adopted and the said matter be uh, deleted in our calendar of business. Okay, tho- those are two main issues solved by uh, the Sanggulang Pang lungsod, a great job guys. So, next item, Madam Sekretary?
Joint committee report from the business of the day hearing of November thirteen regarding the part of six to mark.
Sino po ang nagchair po nung hearing?
Parang council po 'yung dalawang hearing eh.
Matuloy ba 'yung hearing na to?
Alam ko council po.
Hindi sir, natuloy kasi hindi na 'yun because of the type of.
Itong dalawa po, four and five po.
Yes, sir.
So, do we want to reschedule? Uh, item number four and five? Any, Counselor Season, when do you want to schedule the dialogue with Malimtok Pandan?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, uh, reschedule na lang po sa November five. November five at ten AM.
November five, ten o'clock in the morning. So ordered? Regarding the Malimtok issue?
Yes.
Uh, regarding the fire issue? Sino ang nagchair niya, sorry?
Counselor.
Counselor Alfred, when, when do you want to reschedule the?
Uh, perhaps, Mr. Chair, uh, we'll just uh, delete this from the calendar, uh, we'll just try to see some other matters, uh that may perhaps uh, be beneficial to these uh, victims.
Okay, so siguro.
Anyway, uh, there are more alarming concerns.
Okay, so siguro tingnan rin muna natin kung ano pa 'yung mga pwede munang naging action o ginawa kasi nag-
Yeah, sir.
There's W D, may ongoing investigation with the Sukiy Market. And, and last time I checked, parang for the information of the body, parang uh, nagbigay na 'yung city tayo ng ayuda sa mga vendors, mga nasunugan. Pero I think hindi pa malinaw 'yung dialogue between the vendors and the Sukiy Market management. So, siguro antayin rin muna natin nun para.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair.
Siguro.
So, there are more pressing concerns. So, we'll just delete this matter from the calendar.
Okay, so it has been moved by Counselor De Castro, any second?
I second.
By Counselor Ladok, Counselor Rabago, Counselor Segundera, Counselor Ranois, consider it the said item in, in our agenda. Any objection? He ringan the said item is deleted in our agenda. So, Madam Sekretary, siguro hingi na lang tayo ng ano, request na lang in behalf of the Sanggulang Pang lungsod, the, a report of the fire ano fire, uh, ano tawag doon, fire incident report from the BFP or in the market section, si Sir Wilson Tamba. Okay, next items?
Now proceed to the business of the day. Under new business, we have the resolution of arising city mayor art rights suggested to improve the home finance and with the city government of City barangayos Pampasinan and the Alaminos City agricultural cooperative for the provision of capital assistance for poly marketing project of the Alaminos City operator.
Counselor Ranois, recognize?
Uh, if there have no more uh questions, Mr. Chair, I move for the uh, third and final reading regarding the issue.
Shall we approve, since it's just a resolution? Pwede naman nating approve na lang na, okay lang ba?
Approve na natin, sir.
Ah, isa pa. Gusto mo bang i-second reading or i-third reading?
Yeah, approve na natin, Mr. Chair, kung pwede.
Sige, it has been moved by ca- siguro one ano lang, one one thing that uh, we can include dun sa resolution natin is part of the responsibility of the ACAC is to submit uh, maybe uh, twice a year report to the city cooperatives officer, copy furnished the Sanggulang Pang lungsod, kung kumita ba sila o hindi. Para alam natin kung naging effective itong program ang pagdibigay ng one million sa ACAC. Lagay na lang natin sa resolution, Madam Sekretary. So, it has been moved by uh, Counselor Robby Ranois, any second? Seconded by Counselor De Leon, Counselor Fontelera, Counselor Segundera, Counselor Season for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? He ringan the said resolution is hereby adopted.
Sir, my question one more.
Yes.
Sir, will I include the amount in the title of the ordinance? I want the resolution.
Ano ba 'yung title ulit?
Provision of capital assistance without the.
Oh, one million?
Yes po.
Yeah, yeah, lagay mo. Pakilagay na lang dun sa resolution nga, 'yung uh, explicitly say na they have to furnish us a rep- furnish us a report. Kahit na tuwa, kasi after six months, maglalaman naman natin kung kumita ba o hindi. Kasi baka mamaya next year, one million na naman, baka every maging one million. It's a good project, pero let's see also kung nagiging sustainable ba 'yung project na yun, baka mamaya nagagamot din mo sa ibang items, baka mas magandang sa iba rin natin i-invest. Next item, Madam Sekretary?
Next item is the resolution approving the additional partial list of specific projects funded out of twenty percent development fund amounting to one million nine hundred fifty-two thousand seven hundred fifty-four pesos and seventy-nine thousand dollars. The special education fund amounting to three million one hundred eighty-five thousand three hundred thirty-two thousand six hundred dollars. And the special purpose operation amounting to three million eight hundred thirty-three thousand sixty-four pesos and fifty-five thousand dollars. On the city barangayos of Alaminos.
Counselor Siri Ladok?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, if there are no more objections to the proposed measure, I move for its capture.
It has been moved by Counselor Siri Ladok, any second? Seconded by Counselor Raoul Bakay, Counselor De Leon, Counselor Fontelera, Counselor Segundera, Counselor Season for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? He ringan the said resolution is hereby adopted. Next item?
Resolution suspending the post-quarter business tax penalty by percent and interest of two percent of this establishment at Sukiy Market directly affected barangayon incident of October half.
Counselor Siri Ladok?
I move that we now uh, adopt the proposed measure.
It's been moved by Counselor Siri Ladok, any second? Seconded by Counselor Segundera, Counselor Rabago, Counselor De Leon, Counselor Season, Counselor Ranois for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? He ringan the said resolution is hereby adopted. Next item?
Resolution of arising city mayor art rights suggested to improve the home funding funded in the city government of the city barangayos Pampasinan and the town. Haraan sangaan forum butler fifty for implementation of the article number uno, a community local artist development program.
Um, sino ba 'yung kanina, sabi ko? Counselor Alfred? Uh, maybe Counsel, in the absence of Counsel Apple? Uh, Ca- Counselor Bernabe, maybe, since it's a cultural youth group? Shall we adopt the said resolution?
Mister Presiding Officer, I move for the adoption of the re- proposed resolution.
It has been moved by Counselor Bernabe, uh, seconded by Counselor Raoul Bakay, Counselor Season, Counselor De Leon, Counselor Segundera. Any objection? He ringan the said resolution is hereby adopted. Next item?
Resolution accrediting the barangayon village charity Philippines Inc., Alaminos City Chartered.
Ano yun? Sorry ma'am, medyo garbled eh, pwede pong paulit?
Resolution accrediting the party charity Philippines Inc., Alaminos City.
Ah, okay. Counselor Robby Ranois?
Uh. Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, if there have no more question, I move for the approval of this matter.
It's been moved by Counselor Robby Ranois, seconded by Counselor Season, for Counselor Segundera, Counselor De Leon, Counselor Rabago for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? He ringan the said resolution is hereby adopted. Next item?
Second reading of proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-one, that's one who said of arising city mayor art rights suggested to interpret the random of agreement funded in the city government of Alaminos City Pampasinan and the improvement used towards the current progress multi-purpose cooperative for the production and fulfillment of obvious laws or discipline.
Uh. Counselor Robby Ranois, recognize?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chair. There have no more uh questions, uh, I move for the third and final reading.
Resolution na naman to, kung okay, oh, isa pa ba? O okay na ba sa ito? Kung.
Kung wala na, kung pwede i-approve, i-approve na natin, Mr. Chair.
Pwede na. So, it has been moved by Counselor Robby Ranois for the adoption of the said resolution. Any second? Seconded by Counselor Season, Counselor De Leon, Counselor Bakay. Uh, any objection? He ringan the said resolution is hereby adopted. Uh, so for this resolution, maybe we could also put the provision, Madam Sekretary, that uh the city treasurer would uh, furnish the Sanggulang Pang lungsod, uh, maybe twice a year report on uh, the Ikawayan. So, we can uh, more or less estimate and the monitor the expenses incurred and the investment that we can uh, add in this Ikawayan uh, project of ours. Kasi this is a very, a, a good project. That can yield uh, high poten- that has high potential and can yield the added income for all of us.
Pressurizer po ba o sa?
Pressureer na lang, kasi numbers lang naman eh. I mean, we just have to know kung 'yung pinasa natin pera, magkano ba 'yung kinita natin dun. And then in, in the event na may questions tayo sa items, and then we just ask the the, the technical working group po na't basta kung magkano lang, alike na yun, parang two million ata 'yung kinita niya, diba? Andun sa, andun sa, sa report na binigay. And then.
Sino 'yung nag-samin ang report sa akin, sir City Accountant?
City? Ah, sorry, City Accountant pala. City Accountant, not City Pressure. Okay. So, also, remind ko lang ito sa partial list na in-approve natin, in-adapt natin. Humingi tayo ng program of work nung item number, yung under beautification. Okay. So, next item?
Announcement po, niners.
Wala na, wala na ba? Uh, ano minamiss ka?
Yung one po, Mr. Chair.
Ano minamiss? Ano po yun?
About, about my, uh, while I was proposing a resolution, uh, for us to.
Ano po sir, naglalaya ba po kayo?
Ah, go na natin, pwede naman go na natin.
Ayun, yung sa.
Maraready na, oo.
Ready na yun?
We can, since it's uh, ano naman, it's a pressing concern, maybe we could uh file the resolution agad and then to follow na lang 'yung dialogue, tama po ba?
Sige po, okay, kasi eh, sabi naman ni Madam Talan niya kanina, diba? Abrap 'yung pagtaas eh, sige. One, one, one feet, one inch, diba?
So, wala rin tayong control naman, kasi kumbaga parang we are just gonna request them, kasi sawak naman nila 'yung supplies, diba? So, in the motion of Counselor Siri Ladok to adopt the said resolution?
Sir, may, may energy, we like.
The working title would be requesting the fertilizer wholesalers, retailers, and traders to uh, parang to, ano ba tawag dun, yung parang sa gas to uh, ano bang word ang gusto natin? Uh. Uh, basa working title na lang muna, kasi hindi, I can't find the right words right now.
Yes, sir, okay na po, I, 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 ah, mag, mag.
Aa, requesting them to, not naman to lower the prices, but to consider consider the abrupt, uh, consider, I can't find the words right now, sorry.
With our increase.
Sorry, regarding the increase na dapat sana huwag naman nila sobrang itaas agad dahil katamaan 'yung ating farmers. From one, one thousand one hundred to one eight daw. So, that's uh, more than uh, almost one hundred percent increase. So, a- any second to Counselor Siri Ladok's motion? Seconded by Counselor Segundera, Counselor Ranois, Counselor De Leon, Counselor Rabago, Counselor Season. Any objection? He ringan the said resolution is hereby adopted. Okay, next item, Madam Sekretary, wala na?
One.
Okay, announcements? Proceed, Madam Sekretary?
Announcement, we have already received Sanggulang barangayos resolution number, it consists as twenty-two to the round declaring ordinance number twenty-two, what is fourteen, entitled an ordinance introducing the implementation of one highest ex- subarangay. Programming the City barangayos, pala sila, inact it in the comfort powers of Sanggulang Pampasinan. And also, down the resolution number eight-two-seven, that's twenty-one, declaring ordinance number twenty-two, that's twenty-three and ordinance providing for the protocols in having children proving implementation of community property of the City barangayos Pampasinan including those of these three situations, city with special protection, two trillion dollars, and children who complete the law, inactive in comfort powers of Sanggulang Pampasinan. And lastly, Sanggulang barangayos resolution number eight-two-eight, that's twenty-one, declaring ordinance number twenty-twenty-one, that's twenty-five, title of an ordinance creating the following two positions under the executive department of the local government of the City barangayos Pampasinan. A city government assistant department has one hundred and thirty-eight office. City government assistant department has one hundred and thirty-eight office, inactive in the comfort powers of Sanggulang Pampasinan. And lastly, Sanggulang barangayos resolution number eight-two-nine, that's twenty-one, declaring ordinance number twenty-two, that's twenty-seven entitled an ordinance amending the position title of supervising administrator uh, records officer for the uh, supervising administrative officer, budget officer for with salary rate twenty-two under the city budget office of the local government of the City barangayos, Alaminos, inactive in the comfort powers of Sanggulang Pampasinan. And of course, our birthday greetings for Counselor Dalia and De Leon, who celebrated your birthday last October eleven twenty-two.
Okay, happy birthday, Considalia. Deleted, happy birthday. Dapat next time advance. Ay, na-mute kita. Paki-unmute po, Counselor Dalia. Paki-unmute po. Any.
Thank you, thank you, sa pamahatid, thank you.
Pantahan ka na kami na, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, happy birthday, happy birthday.
Happy birthday to me.
Happy birthday po, happy birthday po.
Thank you, thank you, like.
Ilan na, ilan na?
Ah, ah, napaka-konsial na, nag-clip po sa akin, thank you.
Okay, ilan ka na?
Forty-five siya, forty-five.
Forty-five?
Ay, ay, hindi. Hindi. Thirty.
Thirty-five? Ah, okay.
Thirty-six lang pa ako ba is.
Ay, thirty-six pala ako.
Okay. Sige po, uh, any other announcements? Okay, uh, wala na po, uh. Any motion?
Ako, isang pahabol.
Yes, Mamloos?
Uh, hindi po na kasi nalagay na, naumut po di sa ating announcement, yung uh, the resolution number from Sanggulang barangayos. Resolution number eight-three-zero, that's thirty-two-one, declaring ordinance number twenty-twenty-one, that's twenty-eight of the Sanggulang Pang lungsod of Alaminos City Pampasinan, entitled an ordinance creating three positions at the Alaminos under the religious department of the local government unit of Alaminos Pampasinan, inactive in comfort powers of Sanggulang Pampasinan.
Okay, thank you. Kaninong ordinance, 'yung ano, 'yung sa child? Ah, sa Children's Constitution Law, si Counselor.
Ma'am, yes po.
Congratulations, Counselor Carol. Madami ng ordinance mo ah. Ayun, ito namang babae A S F, marami na namang trabaho sa barangay. Dagdag uh, technical working group na naman, sobrang dami ng technical working group sa barangay. Diba?
Ba, sa, 'yung isa, abo, minipisyo ng kuwan?
Ang dami no, ang dami pa, ang dami ng eh, A S F. Ang dami no, ang dami pa, ang dami ng, eh, A S F, may ganito, may ganyan. Ito, meron na naman 'yung kanina, diba, 'yung, ano ba, 'yung sa, sa anasay natin, ano 'yun, Mam Luz? 'Yung isang sa barangay din, 'yung ihiring natin?
Barangay Committee on Disability Affairs.
Disability Affairs, oh, okay, ang dami na naman, okay. Okay, um, any motion? Counselor, uh, Season?
Nice, may announcement pala.
Yes po, announcement po, sige.
Sorry, um, eto po, galing sa P C L, um, attendance to the P C L insurance benefits orientation. So, uh, isesend ko po 'yung, 'yung letter po sa mga kapwa councilors para po, sa orientation regarding sa insurance, nagkakain po tayo ng insurance. So, uh, isend ko na lang po, 'yung meeting ay ri tsaka passcode, so October twenty-two at ten A M po.
Okay, thank you po. Any other announcements? Counselor Season, do you wanna adjourn?
Uh, yes, Mister Chair, uh, there are no more.
Sir, sir, meron po po lang. Kasi ka na po, pinangan mo, please. Uh, in line po with the National Children's Association, the members of the honorable body are invited to participate on the beach shoot for the recitation of Panatang mga Bata that will be posted at the city's official Facebook page on November. The pre, uh, proposed video recording you po is on October twenty, twenty-twenty, the nine A M at this session.
Twenty, hindi po pwedeng sa ano na lang, sa Tuesday na lang, para isang ano?
So, it's a, eh, Tuesday na lang po.
Ah, para session, sa session na dun.
Sige po.
Para.
Itawa po na lang po, sir.
Oo, kasi kung ano, kung may hearing kasi parang tutulpu tayo, and, hindi tayo complete ito, dapat complete po sana tayo. Okay, there's a motion.
Panatang sir, padala ka na lang.
Memorize ba 'yan, kaya ni memorize, hindi naman lang.
Hindi, may mapusap, eh, parang.
Okay, uh, there's a motion by Counselor Carol, seconded, any second? Seconded by Counselor DeLeon, Counselor Segundera, and Counselor Georgia Fontelera for the adjournment of today's regular session. And I'll call this Sanggulang Pang lungsod regular session adjourned. Thank you very much po. Picture po muna, nadisconnect na 'yung iba, pero picture mo muna tayo. Wa- ay, yeah, wait lang. One, two, three. Okay, salamat po. Okay, open po 'yung recording. Salamat po, ingat.
Sir, please, paki-dining ito, sir, ano na po, ma, ma, si. Wala na, wala na. Excited ka, yung, yes, sir.
Angala, angala, ah, no, toa ganun. Wala na, hindi mo ka na na ma-stop mo dyan, five, five, five.
Wala na, wala na, ay, wala pa po. Wala na na lang na.
Angala ko, hindi pa i-a-approve 'yun sa C D R.
Sir, ano na?
Eh, toa, toa ganun na kita, bye-bye.
Sige, sir, bye, sige po.
Ay, Capra Ull, bukas na lang 'yung paper mo ako, wala pa ako eh, nasa Manila pa ako. Ah, thank you, thank you very much. Ingat po.